I feel like saying good evening because it's dark out, so we'll try that. Welcome to the Plington School Committee Meeting from Monday, November 27th, 2017. Just to start things off, this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media, and the video is not considered an official public record. So thanks, everyone, for attending. We have a couple of visitors here with us, Mrs. Reynolds and Mrs. Conroy. Thank you for joining us today. We'll try and keep it as interesting as we can. It doesn't always work out that way, but we'll give it a shot. And we're also, folks can bear with us a little bit, we are moving as much as we can to a paperless or less paper, at least, environment. You'll notice we don't have big stacks of paper here in this computer desk. So we're actually not checking our regular email, we're actually looking at a lot of documents. So off we go. Looking through, do we have, did folks get a chance to look at the minutes from the 23rd? Are there any comments like that? If not, I look for a motion to accept as submitted.
Make a motion to accept, if that's what you want.
Do you want a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For school committee correspondence, we have a couple of items. One, we were going to be having a holiday fair here at the Denne, put on by the local Girl Scout troop. It's happened for the last couple of years, so it's two week, a week from this Friday evening, and the Saturday as well, so if you, I'm sure many of you have had the opportunity to attend. It's very well attended, very nice fair, so certainly check that out. But as part of that, one of the things they were looking to do was to offer pony rides out in the parking lot, I assume, but it depended. And as a result of that, we thought it was probably good to check on the insurance for that, since it is an event that would be covered from our perspective with insurance that we did do. And we actually have school departments, school departments council take a look at that. And there's a little bit of an issue there in that pony rides appear to be exclusions on the insurance policy. I actually did, Peter, thanks for sending that along today. I took a look myself, and after stumbling through a little bit, I did see that Fred was pretty clear about that.
Yes.
So I think unfortunately, unless that is changed in some way, we're not going to be able to allow that as part of the overall events. But committee members, any questions on that? Okay. Second of all, Jason, did you want to speak to the consent note this afternoon?
Yeah, so I regret to inform my fellow school committee members and identity faculty and staff here that I have to resign from my position on the Board of Directors for PAC. I've been advised to do so by council to avoid any potential future conflicts of interest that may arise from my being on the board. So I need to step away at this time. I did submit a letter to the executive director to discuss the situation, and she's accepted my resignation officially today.
And so with that, this is one of those, one of those positions that we can't leave open, particularly given the timing right now with budget season needing to make sure we have a forum. And we will need another member maybe to step forward. I am one who cannot do that, given the financial oversight that the PAC committee has over the retirement, believe?
The Board of Trustees.
The Board of Trustees, yeah.
Our fiduciary responsibilities.
And given my other real job, I can't do that, because it's also a conflict, a potential conflict there. I wanted to see if there's anyone else in the board who's willing to sort of step forward, and if so, then we can also look maybe at the next meeting, maybe we shift some other responsibilities around. We can notice that, but this is sort of pressing.
Yes.
Anyone have interest in stepping forward to the PAC?
Well, I could do it, if I could switch some of my other...
Sure. So I think, I think that that's completely fair. Jason, I'm sure you'd be willing to pick up, perhaps something in place of that, so... Yeah. Because you have, you have Unit 31 negotiating, which is done at least for now, also the policy.
Is it on?
Not policy, no. I just think everyone should be...
Yeah, yeah.
Things are awesome.
Okay. Yep.
Everyone.
Yep. So, but I think probably for the purposes of the org and other things on here, we should put that as an agenda item for next time, with the acknowledgement that we're going to do that, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, that way I can just maybe use something to...
Absolutely.
And so we will, we will level it, level the workbooks, but if you're willing to step forward tonight, then we'll look for that nomination in a second.
Mr. Chair? Just out of procedural reasons, Robert's rules, I know the chair doesn't often make or second a motion, but I'm going to abstain in from this entire proceedings.
I would make a motion that we sort of accept Jason's resignation and Michael's willingness to step up and be the PAC representative for the Denne Elementary. One second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mark.
Please note my abstention from the vote.
Right.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you very much.
We'll do an official letter to PAC to let them know.
Okay. All right. I didn't have any new business within your end?
No.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, I haven't heard anything additional with the driveway sign. I'll do a reach out before next meeting, see where that is with Casa. Water treatment. So at our last meeting, we had sent, we had discussed that the, we had sent letters both from us as well as from Green Seal, Garrett Keegan had sent letters to DEP, and we were waiting for a response there. We did get a response shortly after our October meeting. DEP was willing to consider if not all of the items that we put forward, that they were willing to allow us to swap out copper for PVC for the water treatment, and this is the water coming from the, from the point that it comes into the building, into the treatment system, there would still be copper from anywhere out of the treatment system to the rest of the water distribution. They really do that, they're willing to consider flexibility in the schedule. There were a couple of issues that raised the cost per original estimate. One was from the manufacturer, that they were pretty tight, and as a result, it would cost more to get the actual equipment because of the timeframe we were looking for, as well as the issues of digging the big hole for the drywall. That, that would perhaps cause additional insurance concerns and so on and so forth. So they were willing to deal with us on those items. They were also, I think, willing to consider something to do with whether we add the lead piece, so they were strongly encouraging us to keep that in. And I think based on some of the discussions this committee's already had, that that wasn't a high item on our list, we'd rather put all the treatment mechanicals in this time through, done with it. So Garrett's been following up with the Atlas Construction, who is a little bitter to discuss this, we did hear from them today, and we have a little more work to do, because the plumber wasn't very comfortable without input from the local plumbing inspector as to whether the plumbing inspector would be comfortable with the PVC coming in before the water treatment, because it actually ends up being the local, it's the local plumbing inspector who actually has the authority there. So Garrett's going to follow up with the plumbing inspector. And so we should, we should hear back on that pretty quickly, which will then allow for revised estimate from the, or bid number from the plumbing part of this operation. And then the contractor wanted some, you know, something in writing, granting assurances about a revised schedule, in order to be able to pursue both with the manufacturer of the equipment, but also for his own comfort in providing a revised bid to that, that he would have that additional time and be able to slot the job. Again, the thinking that we have here is that the work for the, the digging work for the drywall would occur April vacation. So given where we are in the year, it's probably our next best time to do it, and that would be sort of, that would be what we were looking for in the bid. Our other thinking would be is that they would between 20th we accept it, and then that the work, other work would be done, so that all that would have to be done after April vacation would be the hookup. I think we would really like to have everything done by the end of April, if possible. Garrett was going to reach out again to DEP to make sure they're good, provide them with a, with a letter, and that they say, yes, they're okay with that, and then provide that to the contractor. So hopefully in the next week or two, we will have revised numbers. I hope it would be to come back to our meeting in December and be able to move this forward.
It's a 21-day turnaround, and I'm just nervous about the ability to get all of that done with all the back and forth phone calls that have to occur. Are you close enough that you're pretty confident you'll have something to sign?
Oh, we're gonna try. So a couple of things on that, I mean, Garrett was hopeful to have a letter done in the next day or two. And DEP, just get DEP's blessing on it. And then the plumbing inspector as well, hopefully they'll be a pretty quick turnaround. I may stop on my way home today, since I know they have office hours tonight to the prize of the potential call, if Garrett hasn't heard a call.
So the light work is done, it's just putting together the loose ends.
That's the hope, yeah. Yep, and I mean, if it pushes to January, pushes to January, but at that point, we really should have and need to have something signed by then. So still moving.
Still moving.
Slowly. Still moving.
Just moving.
Did we want to touch on anything about playground?
So again, the reason why the playground is on the agenda and has been here for a while is because that is our intended next project to move forward with. Again, it's a modernization, an accessibility issue, and it's also a safety issue. So once we know what we're doing with the water treatment plant, and we have a final number, we might have a better idea of what resources we have momentarily to work with to get some firmer plans put into place beyond the dreaming phase that Peter and I went through with one of the contractors, just imaging the space out there and what ifs were answered, but nothing hard, nothing concrete. I'd love to see a design proposal for us that we could bring forward to the town and potentially bring forward next fall to the community preservation committee and see if they're interested in getting on board with matching funds of some kind as well. So we're still in that holding pattern, waiting for the water treatment plan to be at least signed, and we know where we're going fiscally with that.
Right. And we're still on track for that, from the standpoint that, you know, we're looking at a mid-October date for CPC to be able to submit an application, so we would really want to have something by the end of summer to be able to use, to put that application together, to be able to have numbers that were pretty solid for that, so. On to the standing committees. Administrative review?
We're meeting in December, because we're still late meeting, December 14th.
14th.
I knew that. Start you with the chair.
Look at how happy he is.
I know.
Negotiations, there's nothing with that? We, Unit 31?
No meeting yet, we'll have one probably February-ish when we have the budget.
Okay. Okay. Let's back to PAC, based on the prior role.
At my last PAC meeting, I had to recuse myself from the room, again, to avoid any conflict of interest potentially. The executive director of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative has announced her intent to retire next November, 2018.
Any budgets are starting now?
We have formed subcommittees, but there's been no action taken yet.
It's the season. Policy.
Come on, I was gonna...
How many again was?
I think it's a, I think it's 112 or 120.
It's disgusting.
It's disgusting. It is totally disgusting. I think we made it through 38-ish.
Was that it?
Yeah, I know. Sorry, I know.
38?
Yeah.
Felt like more.
It did.
But I guess to level set at least with some of these policy changes, I mean, I see did a full sort of go through of the book.
Yes.
So there's a few in here that are a little bit amusing in that they added a "her."
Yes.
So the policy's been out there for how long, and it's just been his?
Yeah.
So only apparently the male part of the population is subject to the policy, and the female part wasn't. But you sort of sit there going, how long is that thing?
Yeah, yeah.
And, but there's going to be more work to come, and this is going to be months of it, I would think.
I would think. There's a very good chance. So next month, we'll bring forward for December, the first reading of the 38 that were approved, and that will be the December round, we're just going to keep them on the same on the schedule.
And the goal is, is there's no way we can do this all at once for anyone to actually be able to read them, so we're gonna, they're gonna just be cycling through as we have some... And I'm almost done with my homework, I have two to read, so.
Very quick, well done.
Well, we'll see. I still have two to read.
Yeah.
Capital improvement?
So I think we're just beginning the budget process, and just so you know, in terms of some of the capital items that we're talking about here, the priority for capital items for Plington, I think first is the phone.
Correct.
That's our main priority. I don't know if the town will be able to approach a grant. I know that there is some community money out there that you could potentially get for grants. I don't know if that's something that we can approach John Trainer, you see, but that is a possibility, that we could update through it. I know that like the town of Kingston updated the town hall's phones through this grant.
Yes.
I believe John was able to get the grant for some computer equipment. I don't know what the town hall situation is with phones. I don't know if there's a way we can sort of piggyback, but I assume they're sort of in a similar situation that we are.
They're in better shape.
Oh, they are, okay.
They have a new system, it's in some of the last couple of years, than the last few years.
Okay. So ours is not so good. So the priority, I think, is phones is number one. Number two is the roof. We did have someone come out here and did a little bit of a look around for the roof. We have some maintenance that needs to be done now, and Peter's working his way through that, that sort of ongoing, that would be taken out of the regular budget, but that is going to be something that will be down the road, that we'll need to look at a little bit more seriously.
And, and as part of having that evaluation, we've done some scoping, so that we can put in for our capital plan.
I, we're...
I believe that would be part of it.
Yes.
Yeah, because we need, we need to have an idea of how big a breadbox it is, and when, we need to open it.
Absolutely.
You know, it wasn't three years, five years, seven years, and even though the capital planning is only five years, maybe it's seven or eight years, it is a big enough number that I want that to be at least a footnote highlighted.
Yeah. There's a section of the roof that's worse than the others, the white part.
Yes.
The white part of the roof.
And one of the things that's going to be interesting with the assessment too, is we have, I think, four different sections of roofs that will put on at different times, so some of it is going to be in better shape than the other sections, so it's just a matter of getting to the bottom of what exactly needs to be done now, and is there a chance that something else can be done later? Like it's gonna...
And, and we need to make sure that we understand whether that makes the fullest of any sense, medium and long term, and cost-wise.
Exactly.
You know, because sometimes you can do a bit and do a bit, but then we end up 10, 15 years out, and now we're back, because we didn't do it all at once, we have X number more seams, you know? So that should, hopefully, we'll have that information.
Right. Right now, we're sort of on a getting through the winter phase, because it's late.
Oh, is that?
So we're gonna, we were able to clear out a drain that was pretty well clogged, that was causing some issues too. So we had Navla, is it Navla came out?
No, that was Holdley.
Oh, Holdley. Holdley came out and cleared a downspout that was causing some issues, it was causing blockages and more water to build up there, which was not helping the situation any. So we're, we're sort of working our way through. Kara had come out, she, our new facilities director, came out and actually was able to help Pete and get some people out here, so that was the beginning for us.
Did she see anything else that, on the horizon? Because you guys do a walk through the building?
We have. We live on this particular day, she just went straight up to the roof. It was all business.
Because there was a bomb?
Yeah.
Yes.
And she was kind of figuring out the downspout, something we hadn't quite realized was part of the issue, so it's, it's going to be a bit of a process, but at this point, our priority is that, you know, we've got the downspout cleared, and we'll take care of the roof in terms of getting through this winter.
Yeah.
And then I think we're going to need to do the, what is it called, infrared?
Infrared.
And it can't be done unless it's 80 to go to looking through. That you can't do any infrared.
The ambient temperature, that's right.
It has to be 80 degrees, so we can't, we probably won't be able to get to that until the spring. So it's, I wasn't actually being, I wasn't actually...
Late, late spring.
Yeah, I wasn't actually being facetious, literally, we're just going to be getting through the winter, just get a sense of, you know, making sure we're not dripping.
So do we have any notional ideas from anyone that's been up there about...
It's not as bad as Halifax was, and not as bad as Kingston is. Does that help?
No, I'm not going to tell you, but okay.
Yeah. It's, it's not great, but it isn't critical, was the sense I have. And I think we'll be able to do the patching to get us through for a bit. So as I said, we, we need to do the infrared before we can go too far, to get a sense of what it is, and that has to be temperature-based.
I know, you're probably thinking for the long-term capital plan for the town, it would be nice to have a number.
More, more so a timeframe, but I think we'll just have to note, to make sure that we highlight that this is an item coming. We don't know that it's five years, so it's not on here, but they have to be aware, it could be three.
Or maybe we could have Kara at least give us an all power, even all the way from, you know, the patching along over the next five years, to what a total roof replacement would cost if we had to go back for it.
Yeah, I think we need something, it just, to me, it's such a big receipt that it's...
We have, as I said, we, we hired a company to give us, right, and so they're...
To need 80 degrees.
Right. We need the 80 degrees for the second part.
Even if we can have notional numbers?
But they're going to do, at least do the initial part for us, so it's in process.
All right, so this is supposed to be part of our thinking for that capital plan, because I'm putting something on there about the roof regardless, even if it is, it's coming and we don't fully know.
Right.
I just want folks to be aware, because, you know, besides a, you know, besides a police station and at some point dealing with whatever you do with the fire perspective, this would be the next biggest budget item for the town. Now, obviously, though painful, there's an opportunity that you could get some funds for that, but it's still going to be a big chunk.
It's good, absolutely, yep.
And it has to be in that.
So I think we were talking that, there's four things, the first one's the phone, the second was the roof, the third was...
Playground.
Is the playground, and the fourth is key fops?
Correct.
That was pretty good off the top of my head, yeah. But then I had a second couple of days somewhere, key drops. Oh, I'm sorry, please. Key drops. Just old ears. So that's, that's sort of our order of priorities in, in some initial discussions, but Pete, Pete and I are working my way through in terms of the order of presentation, so Halifax budget's the first day we're back from Christmas vacation, so I sort of go Halifax, Kingston, Silver Lake, Denne, so he's on the agenda, but not quite yet.
So we're last.
But Pete and I talk all the time, that's why I knew his path forward.
Absolutely.
Set yourself up for that one.
I did.
I couldn't not take it.
I know.
Okay. Are there other, other items from a capital perspective? The other thing, I can talk about this periodically, but now that we have facilities manager, and as of today, we have a town administrator, we need to get our hands around the parking lot.
Yep.
As something to. And I know when we talked with the planning center folks when they were here, they had brought it along, or on the highway department side, even though, you know, just because of knowledge and all that, so that's something else, as we're working through this process, we should get out there, because while less critical certainly than the roof, it isn't in beautiful shape out there, and the highway department did come and fix some of the small caverns that were out there.
Yep.
And that's great, and they're very good to, good to us to help us out with that, but I think we do need to get a good understanding of what the long-term plan is, and what, what we need to do out there too, so we don't end up with, you know, any sort of catastrophic issues out there too. Anything else? No? Okay. Legislative?
Well, back in early part of the fall, Democratic Legislature reconvened and started spending money like water, and for a while, I couldn't put my thumb on why, and it turns out that when the receivables came in at the state level for the last quarter, we were actually over by 2% for the first time, I think, in like 11 quarters, it came in over estimates. So the money was being spent at a risk pace. We all know that one quarter above benchmark doesn't indicate a trend, but that's how spending at the state house is going right now. There's no indications currently of how locally aid is going to turn out for next year's budget, and even less transparent than our local government, the federal level trying to figure out what's going on in Washington right now when it comes to funding of education. You're, you're better off going and reading terror cards or looking into a crystal ball. I describe it as whiplash, one day it's this, and the next day it's that. So my, my advice is right now, don't even pay attention till after the holidays, and hopefully we'll get a clearer picture. There's still threats being made to Title II funds, Title I funds, lots of grants that our most needy of children depend on to get adequate and equity in their educations. So the good news is MASE had its annual convention, and we had some very pro-child, pro-student, and pro-local control resolutions, and they all passed, and will be put forth by our legislative representative at the state house to try and impact legislation statewide for the betterment of our schools and for the benefit of our children.
Okay. Thank you. Did we have any single, single signature warrants this month?
I don't think we've had any since the last meeting, yeah.
All right. So, Mr. Venino?
Thank you very much. We can start off with our enrollment, we're currently at 204 students at the Denne Elementary School. We have some very important dates coming up, and a lot of these items will have their own notice going home as well. We will be having the Holiday Bazaar for students on December 5th and 6th. Grade two will be having their family heritage celebration on December 8th, and that night will be part one of the Girl Scout Craft Fair from 6 to 9. They'll continue on Saturday, December 9th, and the fair will be here from 9 to 3. We will be having our holiday concert on the 14th of December, the 1:30 show, and there's a 7 o'clock show. Start of holiday vacation is December 23rd, and we will reopen our doors on January 2nd, 2018.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christine?
Thank you. That was very speedy, Peter.
Do we have a...
Well, this will be speedy also. I believe in your package tonight, you're still receiving a copy of the financial, correct?
Yes.
There were just a couple of items I wanted to highlight. If you go to the detail of this on page 1 of the detail, about two-thirds of the way down the page, you will see a deficit of $4,360 under our tuition reimbursement account. We're having a pretty significant year this year, I think, with some of our newer teachers. We have had savings in salaries, but now we're, they're taking advantage of some of the tuition reimbursement programs, so that's who we are right now, and we project that that will continue to, to grow. The next one I wanted to raise your attention is on page, oh my goodness, 3 of the detail, it's the special education area. If you look at our special education tuition area, you will see a couple of deficits, but those are just within some of the categories. The area as a whole still has a surplus of $207,000, and as of right now, with the information that we know, that's who we expect to be. Just above that account, you'll see special education transportation. Right now, we are projecting deficit of $579, based on the information that we have at this time, and we believe that's what it will be for June 30th, unless there are some changes. And then on the very last page of your report... And then on the very last page of your report, the out-of-district vocational section. We had budgeted for eight students, and only five were attending out-of-district vocational placements, and right now, we're projecting a surplus of about $105,000, based on all the students that we're aware of at this time. That's it right now. Are there any questions?
Mr. Dever, do we have any updates from the council?
I haven't been able to attend the meetings, so I haven't had an update, but I'll probably be up the next one.
All right. Thank you. Jill?
Thank you. I'll start with my November progress report, which was actually submitted back in October. But at the end of October, the state released some of its MCAS data and accountability information, and reports were sent to all of the building principals. Presentations were sent to the building, to all of the schools to review their school and grade level data with their staff. In addition, we provided links on our webpages to the Department of Education, resources for parents, including the parent guide and frequently asked questions. And since then, we have had some opportunities to look at some of the data more closely at grade level meetings, but also school-wide, to begin looking at potential areas in need of alignment, or potential areas where we can work with students to help them to meet expectations. The October professional development survey results were shared with the Professional Development Committee, and they are using those results to help shape and inform our February Professional Development Day. And we're excited about the options that we're exploring for that day, which will, again, focus on helping us to meet our plan for success with a strong focus on social, emotional learning, and growth mindset. I was also able to attend on October 23rd the Title II A and Title III Conference, which was really about the grant cycle amendments and appropriate uses for grant funds. And then finally, I had the pleasure of attending with Superintendent Blackwood and Jamie Vetonis in helping to present at the MASC/MASS Conference on Planning for Success, the process, its implementation, and the process that we're using now and in the future to help meet those goals. The other thing that I wanted to share with you are our MCAS Next Generation results. Thank you. results were sent out by the principals. I believe it was the first week of November. Am I correct, Peter?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. So, the Next Generation MCAS focuses on critical thinking and application, and it will eventually replace the older legacy MCAS tests for grades 3 through 10. As you know, students in grade 3 through 8 took this new version, which we're going to refer to as Next Generation MCAS. The state has been moving towards computer-based testing. By spring of 2019, all testing grades 3 through 8, grade 10, ELA, and math will be computer-based. The plan is for science to also be computer-based by 2020, but that was not part of the state's formal presentation at the end of October. So, in Clinton, students took the Next Generation MCAS. 2017 will serve as a baseline for target setting, and it's important to remember that this is just a single-year set of data, and so we shouldn't get excited, too excited about any fluctuations one way or another, and we'll talk a little bit more about how we can't really equate it with the legacy MCAS and why. What the state did provide us with were achievement levels, a sample parent report, and aggregate results for schools, districts, and the state. And they spent some time emphasizing not to equate the two tests. This slide actually emphasizes the changes to the achievement level descriptors, and in red, you will see the emphasis on parents, students, and teachers working together to meet expectations. That's entirely new language. That wasn't part of the legacy MCAS descriptors. So, the descriptors changed, and the parts in red are also a significant departure from the past, where it's really talking about collaborating to help all children meet expectations. Here's an example of the standard setting across all of the grades 3 through 8. Approximately 50% of students will meet or exceed expectations in the statewide projections. So, that golden-orange color represents the majority. That's meeting expectations. A very small percentage will actually exceed expectations, and so this was a rigorous standard that was set. You'll also notice that it's pretty consistent across all of the grade levels tested, and that's because it was done by educators at the same time, unlike the previous legacy MCAS where the standard setting was done at different points in time. So, the state emphasizes, the Department of Education emphasizes, that the results do not mean that students learn less. The Next Generation MCAS measures in a different year, and we can expect, and what they did expect and what actually happened, is that the percent who are meeting expectations are lower than in previous, in the previous percent of students who scored proficient. So, anticipation of that, part of the explanation is that the tests were set at the same time. The panels of educators standardized the results across all grade levels, but the test or the standard setting itself was, in fact, more rigorous. This is a sample report for a parent, and you'll notice the results by the reporting category and individual test questions. It's a little bit more difficult to see because the font is smaller, but you can see in the top left is the reporting category, and more towards the bottom of the page are the individual test questions. To the far-right corner, there is a website where parents can go to see descriptions of every test question. Not all test questions were released, similar to legacy MCAS, only certain test questions were released, but parents can see a description of each test question. So, the state offers guidance for parents and for schools who may receive questions for parents, and reminds us that the new standards are more rigorous and should not be compared to previous year's scores. So, we have posted links to the frequently asked questions and the Department of Education support documents on our websites to also help parents. The state also took the time to acknowledge potential barriers to learning, such as poverty, building culture competency, supporting homeless students, and making schools safe. And it emphasized our needs to work together to overcome these types of obstacles. It did not, it stopped short of prescribing how we would do that, but acknowledged those potential issues for children. In terms of accountability, since this is a Next Generation MCAS testing school, you will not see a school percentile calculated for Denit. You will not see a PPI calculated for Denit this year. Nor will there be a CPI or cumulative progress performance index. What you will see is a report that emphasizes participation rates, and at Denit, they were able to meet all of the participation targets, and some of these categories are left blank, and that's because you need a subgroup of 20 or more students in order to be considered a subgroup. In order to meet the participation target, 90% of the district administering the Next Generation in grades 3 through 8 had to be present or participate in the test. The following results are presented in a familiar fashion, but the descriptors have changed. So, instead of proficient, we're not talking meeting or exceeding expectations, for example. So, here you see that Denit ELA grade 3 is outperforming the state with 64% meeting or exceeding the state's standard. For math grade 3, we are pretty much on par with the state. Similar results, we actually have more students who are exceeding expectations, but fewer who are in the lighter blue category of meeting. Again, we are a little bit lower than the state on English Language Arts grade 4. We see far more partially meeting state expectations, so here it will be interesting to look at the number of students who are just on the cusp of meeting expectations and examining how we can help to better align or to meet some of the areas that those students may be struggling with. Here we have math in grade 4. We are below the state with 38 meeting or exceeding, and the state is at 49% meeting or exceeding. And again, I caution that we don't jump to any conclusions. Again, this is a single data point, but what the department does provide us with are some, and also some good news is that there are strong growth scores, which you haven't seen yet, but I will be presenting, and that's important as well, to be able to see and make sure that the students are on target for growing in comparison to other students across the state, not just within the district.
I think it's also just worth reminding, and I'm not going to remind anyone here, but for those that are watching, we do not have a large class. So, one student can make that bar jump one way or another, it's like there'd be on either end of the side, so it's, it is very dependent upon, I mean, it could have been up to what someone had for breakfast that day that would move the chart.
Very small numbers. English Language Arts grade 5, here you see a jump in grade 5 with 68% meeting or exceeding, And again, in grade 5 mathematics, outperforming the state with 68% meeting or exceeding. Science grade 5, 50%, outperforming the state at 50% meeting or exceeding. English Language Arts grade 6, 68% meeting or exceeding state expectations, again, higher than the state. Really strong percentage here in math by grade 6, 81% meeting or exceeding the state's So, another piece of information that we'd like to look at are student growth percentiles. And just to review, because it's been a while since you've probably talked about student growth percentiles, at least in a school committee meeting, is that it is a measure of a student's progress that compares changes in the student's MCAS scores to changes in MCAS scores of other students with similar achievement profiles. So, if they scored similarly on the previous MCAS test, they are being compared to that particular student, and that's how they generate that SGP. The on-target median SGP is between 51 and 59, and that's how those points get added to your PPI each year. So, here we see a chart with a percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, and you can see some nice, strong growth in ELA 4 and 5, and still average around in ELA 6. This chart also gives you the average student score, the number of students included, and the achievement percentiles. In math, again, you see on-target or strong growth, 78.5 SGP in math grade 5, math grade 6 at 74 SGP. And again, the meeting or exceeding expectations posted along the top, the average student score listed below that. So, what we do with this data, because we don't have any comparative data per se, is that we look at areas, we look for trends within the school data, but also across the data in areas where we may find that the majority of students may not have performed as well, and we look at ways that perhaps it might be an alignment issue. We also look at maybe the way a question was phrased when we have those particulars. Sometimes teachers readily look at these types of item analysis things and say, oh, yeah, when we do this, we always present this in this way, maybe we need to consider rephrasing or giving students more questions that are like this. This is a great opportunity for us to look at this kind of very subject-specific, grade level, and also school-specific data to help students next year, but also students this year, so that if there are gaps in their meeting the expectations, what we can do to help support them and to provide differentiated instruction for them. We're also doing work in professional development, which focuses on growth mindsets, and we will be reviewing our district curriculum accommodation plan. We're going to review the process and procedures and looking to find ways to add strategies and supports, especially with regards to social and emotional interventions, which is relatively new to the district in terms of its focus, so we're going to be adding those as well to our current district curriculum accommodation plan. And for those of you who are unaware of what a district curriculum accommodation plan is, it's a way that a team of educators can meet regarding a child who may be having difficulties in a particular academic area, but it could also be a social, emotional, or behavioral area. And they look at whatever data they may have, any concerns that have been raised by a parent or a teacher, and they put into place a plan for that child to try and help them, and then they watch to see if those interventions have been successful, similar to an IEP in special education, except this is for students who are in the general education population who do not qualify for an IEP or may not need an IEP, for example. But it's a way for us to provide more personalized education for all children, because developmentally, children change and grow, and they have different needs at different times in their life. So, that's what a D cap is created to do. And then finally, we'll continue to revise and align our curriculum. There have been some changes to both math and ELA in particular that will need to be updated and considered, and the creation of some common assessments to help benchmark our student progress to make sure at certain points of the year, for example, writing. I know that we have set some goals in terms of making sure that the type of writing that our students are doing is reflective of the expectations from the state. And we'll also help them to respond to text in particular, so using text and using a piece of text in order to respond in writing is something that we're going to be focusing on as a potential common assessment that can help us to gauge where students are at different points in the year. So, those are some of the plans we have in place, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
I think one of the most important things to understand, being on both sides of the table, being a teacher who sees scores for my students, but also being a school committee member, is that there's years where some of the scores look low, but when you get to the end and you look at the sixth grade scores, and even from a broader view, when you get to the high school and look at the scores there, that's all built from kindergarten on up, and it takes the work of the entire school community to attain those results. So, I just want to encourage people not to dwell on a single year, but look at what the final outcome is. And just know that no teacher wants to see numbers that are in the red. And I have all the faith in the world that they and their administrators will work together, not to oversteer, because that's a big danger when you overreact to some of these scores, but just to take into account some practices and some ideas, to make some subtle adjustments, and do what's right for the kids, and I have all the faith in the world they will.
And back to John's point, it is a small number of kids, and like you said, it could be breakfast, not breakfast, test anxiety. You know, some kids perform very well on tests and others do not, so it doesn't have to do with any of the preparation, prior activity, done in the snapshot and in the moment.
Yeah, it's one of the least concerning things as a school committee member to see all year long. I appreciate the time that you put into the report, but it's a day. It's a minute. It's not the 180 other days.
No, it's not the only measure.
It's one.
And remember, it's, you know, each child is a minimum 3% in this district. So, I mean, you know, does it really, I mean, if you think of it that way, it's just a very small population, so.
There's always outliers.
Seeing what these kids do and what the staff does at things like the Thanksgiving Day feast is the reason why you live in this town, not because of...
And the other thing I think that was really important to note, and Jill touched on it a little... a little bit, was the children that were in the lowest bars, the, what is it called now?
Uh, not meeting.
Not meeting, no, it's not working, no, that's on the test. Uh, not meeting, not meeting expectation was much lower than the state, you know, we're able to get, you know, we might not have them, so there, you know, a lot of children could be right on that cusp of going to the next level, but we really move kids out of that bottom, which is really what's most important.
And my concern is for the anxiety of those children in particular. It is only one measure of many measures of the school, and certainly the wonderful things that go on there. But I often sympathize with the, the parents and the students who worry about, worry about these scores, so it's, it's our job to try to find ways to try to help them meet those expectations and to do the best we can. And so, but I, I really appreciate the fact that you can put this into context of the much bigger picture, because I think that's so critical to your school's success, and it's, it's very nice to hear. It's my first MCAT presentation here at Lipton, so I appreciate that.
And we, we did all, all the tests that were administered in the Senate were done online.
Of course.
Correct? So, and that's something else, I just, science wasn't?
Science was. There was no option.
There was no option, but I believe it's only rephrasing, so any test where there was an option to do online, and that has been not only this year, but it was last year too.
Last year.
And that was a big push for this committee to get to that point, because we weren't going to rush there, when we couldn't accommodate it.
Right.
But we were able to accommodate it, you know, many thanks to the technology folks and all the teachers here and working with that, and also trying to make sure that we had the computers in the classrooms, so it isn't something that is foreign to them when they get to this point. And it's where it was going, and so that early preparation, it will, it's made a difference, I think, and will show up more, I think, in the business as you, as you go along, just so that it's, it's easier, and also trying to really reduce that, that anxiety. That was one of the big things we did, didn't we do, we did one grade as a test one year, and we had to take over the library for two weeks, and everyone's got, I mean, it's like, no, 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 they need to sit at their desks, where they're comfortable in the room they're comfortable with.
Right.
And we were able to do that, and that's great, you know, some of the other schools out there are trying to get to that point, so we're, we're a good spot for that, so that's great. So thank you for.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. We started talking last month a little bit, but Jason wasn't here, and I know this was something that he did a little bit of original legwork on, was the Special Education Stabilization Fund. So I don't know if the committee has any interest in moving forward a little bit on this, or exactly what legwork has been done, but we started the conversation, but since you weren't here, and I know you were sort of the person who did the legwork, we decided to wait for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well, John and I ended up at a selectmen meeting last spring together, and we were just lucky enough that there was some very intelligent people in the room with us, and sometimes it can be very lonely for the selectmen talking to the camera. We mentioned this idea of the Special Ed Stabilization Fund that can be created by town meeting, but then we had some questions about where would the funds come from to fund it? Would we have to wait a whole year after creating it for another town meeting to put money into it? And we came up with the treasurer's help, one of the town treasurers, to help some creative ways of how we could potentially create the fund and subsequently fund it in the same year, if we had any money left over from this year's budget. So it's contingent upon that fact. The amount of money that I believe that you can put in there is.
Two percent.
Two percent of the operation budget, right?
Net school spending.
Net school spending, right, okay. So in the past couple of years, we've been around three point two million dollars for operating budget.
I think it would have to be about forty-five thousand, I'll stop my head.
I don't remember the exact money.
It was about forty-five thousand, it couldn't seem that something that was.
So we've given back to the town in the past few years, more than that amount of money. And if we ever had a year where we had a substantial out-of-district special education liability, this would be something that would protect both our operation budget, but also the town's budget from taking a date. We would be able to put forty-five-ish thousand dollars into the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, and it could sit there in a revolving account manner until we ever needed it to access it if we had one of those years. It would give us one more year of planning, where we could go to the town and say, look, these children are in our town now, we're going to have to put this in the budget from now on, but it won't have to be a panic moment, and usually the biggest mistakes financially may be in moments of panic. So I just think this gives us all pause and some reassurance that we would have the capability of doing what's right for a child and have the finances to back it up. So we would need to go back to the selectmen so we could get an article drawn up for a town meeting. We would probably need to revisit the idea the treasurer had, it's on YouTube, I've watched it a couple of times, she laid it out there, of how we could create the stabilization fund and fund it within the same meeting. So that's the idea we currently have. I'd be more than happy to bring it back to the selectmen's attention if you would like me to proceed that way.
We, my suggestion would be, if you wanted to do that, to take a vote of the school committee that you're interested in pursuing it, and that you support going forward with it as an article. The other piece that you didn't mention, I think we mentioned last month, but I'm, sometimes I get lost with committee, I mentioned it at some, my apologies, is if we have the Special Education Stabilization Fund, it can only be accessed if there's a vote supporting it by the school committee as well as the selectmen. The school committee does not have the ability. Right, thank you. So it would only, that would be the only way it could be accessed, it would not have to go back to town meeting again to access it, but it would only be accessed if it had the vote in support of the school committee as well as the selectmen, just for the public.
Thank you.
I mean, I think the only problem with this is that it's capped at two percent.
Yes. I believe that's a small amount.
You know, it's, well, I, I think for everybody it's a small amount, because it, you know, I mean, and if you're in a bigger district, you have a much greater exposure.
Good point.
You know, so I think it's, I think that's the problem. That said, forty-five thousand dollars is a big number for the town, and if we have something that happens unforeseen, moving into district type of thing, it, it, it reduces that pressure for the special town meeting that year, and for the annual town meeting perhaps the year after. So it's not an ideal solution, doesn't fix things, we've had swings both ways. I mean, you look at the budget we just talked about today, we have a swing two hundred thousand one way, but I've seen swings that went two hundred eighty thousand the other.
Absolutely.
So, you know, these swings happen, we've been in good times lately, and things have been generally, we've been giving back every year, and that's great, and I hope that continues until I'm no longer a school committee.
I'm with you.
But I, I think it's really a necessary thing to do, it's good financial planning if we get, you know, we put the article on and we get to late April and something else has gone off, there's no requirement to fund it. You know, there's, that's the flexibility that we have, but if we do have surplus and we can fund that and get that built up, we could also fund it partially. I mean, there's any number of things here, and then again, we will be working with the selectmen on that. So, and I think going back to the selectmen, it will probably be a good idea to, do any of the other towns in the district have this yet?
No, Halifax, we've forwarded Halifax, the selectmen were not interested in it, in setting it up in Halifax. In Kingston, the selectmen were very interested and actually had it on the town meeting, but the finance committee felt they hadn't had enough time to research it and asked us to table it until then.
I believe that the Kingston Finance Committee has actually reached out to me for some information.
I, I've encouraged them to do lots of things.
Okay.
Does it make sense to reach out to Fred to see if he has any seen language or?
I have language actually from the towns that we used in Kingston, it's on their board, which was, actually we could access online, that was the one they picked, but I actually reached out to my colleagues and sent like three or four.
So it's on the, it's on the board for the special that they just had?
Yep, exactly.
And if you recall, in the spring when I mentioned it's my selectmen, I had reached out straight up the chain of command at DESI and got the language from the person who basically got the Municipal Modernization Act to include that as part of the regulations, and he walked me through it.
Jase Holden.
So I. And I did, I did hear you left the motion, we'll get to that.
Yeah, that does sound, I'm sorry.
I, I think for that next meeting, it would be good to, to have a draft board article to provide ahead of time, just so that we can have that as part of the discussion, not to be finalized yet, but to, this is the type of thing of how it might look, and, you know, we'd look, we need further input both from that and FinCon, and then it also may be worthwhile to, to have it on a night perhaps when FinCon is there, if they want to join the discussion overall, and then we can meet separately with FinCon too. If not, we can just do both separately, but I think it's a, to me, it's, the feedback was very positive when we met with them, and I think it makes, it's sort of why wouldn't you have it, in my mind.
I, I agree completely.
If you can't fund it at certain points, then you can't fund it and you deal with the consequences of that, but it's there and you have it and there's durability. And then maybe the next step is to see about getting that number up to a place where it's meeting for those rainy days.
Yes.
Because if you have, someone moves into district, that could be a permanent increase for a number of years, which means that you're going to defeat that very quickly. I'd entertain a motion regarding, regarding going forward to the selectmen to pursue stabilization, Special Education Stabilization Fund article.
I motion to move, that is not going to be fair, the Special Education Stabilization Fund article to.
To move forward to the selectmen.
To the selectmen.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All of you there?
Thank you. And then I just wasn't sure if you had any other thoughts in terms of a budget priority discussion. We talked about some of the capital ideas, we've had some basic discussions. Pete and I have not had our official sit-down chat yet, but we've had a couple phone conversations. We feel pretty confident of staff at this point, we're not feeling a need to add any additional staff, and, you know, programmatically, we are in good shape in terms of curriculum. We have the normal, but we're not looking for any sort of a full implementation. We did science last year, if you remember, so at this point, we're sort of on a maintenance. Down the road, I think if you remember when Melissa was here, I'd asked her to sort of do an oversight of some of our materials, and she did sort of a review of the materials we have. Math will be coming up, because we had a seven-year.
Contract with.
Contract, yeah, I couldn't even remember what the word was, sorry, lack of sleep time. A seven-year contract with a company so that they renewed it every year with the workbooks, and I believe that expires nineteen twenty, it must be.
Nineteen twenty.
Yeah, nineteen twenty. So we will be looking at math, but not next year, but we'll be doing a little research, but it won't cost us anything. So we won't have any major curriculum updates. We're in pretty good shape with technology, I don't believe we have any major, although I haven't seen what Steve puts down yet, but, you know, we're, we're feeling pretty good about where everything is. The roof is, I think it was seven thousand dollars, I believe I forwarded you the bids to do sort of a review of it. The, the company that was the lower bid is actually the company that I've been working with in Halifax, and I know them, and they're, they're, they've been wonderful to work with, Habib and Associates, so they actually had a little bid, and I like them, so it worked really well. But, you know, we're going to work with them for that, that's going to be just out of this year's regular maintenance budget, we don't anticipate there being any problem with that at this point. But I don't, I don't know of any major things, but I wasn't sure if there was any concerns that you might have, or any thoughts you might have in terms of the building or priorities.
I, I like the idea of having a cyclical curriculum adoption and keeping a number there, and I know this year you said that there's no major curriculum adoption areas, and that you feel like we're okay with technology, but I really think that might be an area to look deeper in with Steve, and especially with the teachers. You know, do we need a few more of these around, or is this the last thing teachers want to see? Do we want to look at some more interactive whiteboard-type situations, Apple TV, ways to project information in the classroom? And I, I would say use, use that number and keep it about where it was from last year.
Oh, we're not going to go down, in terms of technology, you know, but.
No, 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 not, not just for technology, but also in the area of the curriculum dollars and sense that we had from last year's budget.
Right.
You know, I'm not trying to say, you know, spend it just to spend it.
Do we have much though?
Well, last year we did a full, a science adoption.
Last year or this year?
Uh, well, the, last year, last year, yeah.
This year we didn't have it, don't we? The current year.
Good point, no, you're actually, you're right, we didn't, so that, there already was a decrease.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So I think, so I'm going to pick up on that, and I think that is something to look at, whether it makes more sense to have something there that we can run through. I'm not sure that's the preference of the FinCon, but we should look into that. Alternatively, I mean, isn't an investment in books part of the capital plan? I mean, it's cap, it's per capital purchase.
Right, sure.
It's not, it's not a monloer, but.
Right, yep. Yeah, and I mean, there are, there are some things, right?
So as, so as part of that, I know we don't know what we're going with, and we don't know, we should have a number that we will be putting onto the capital plan for when the contract is done in nineteen twenty. So that should slot in for, that would be what, twenty twenty-one? There should be a number there for math, at least as a placeholder, if we have some notional numbers there, and even if it has to go up next year as we get closer to it and they have that, this is the type of thing that, that capital planning and FinCon want to know is coming, because it isn't going to be five grand, right?
Right, that's true. The other number, which won't be a huge increase, but I anticipate it being an increase when we talk about the financial statement, is professional development. You know, at this point, we do have some new teachers that are going in, that number, you know, with the new contract, we have a higher amount for reimbursement, plus we have a lot of younger teachers taking courses at this point, so that is something that you're probably going to notice a, a pretty good increase, because we would be remiss in not making that higher, because obviously we're already burning in a deficit.
At the other end, that's, that's makes sense.
So that's an area that we will be looking at.
So the, the phones were put on our capital plan for this coming year. Okay, so we did put that number in, we should assess that number and make sure that that's still reasonable as to what we're doing now, but that was put in. My general preference.
Are you looking for that outside the budget, excuse me? Are you looking outside the budget?
That would be outside the budget, yep. I think, yep, I think that would definitely be the preference for FinCon. And so, so that's that piece of it, but my general preference is that something shouldn't show up on the capital plan in a year that we're expecting. So for key card access, even though that is a big item that I have interest in, I just think in this day and age, and I've been using it for twenty-five years in the professional program, and we don't have it at the school, that I think is definitely a priority, but you know, unless we do the budget and realize that there's all, there's, you know, we're not asking for all sorts of things, I would probably put that on the capital plan again for one year out, and then we would do the phones.
And I know Jill's been meeting, had a meeting today with Melissa about some of the curriculum and.
So the two programs that they're looking at for math, one is a seven-year contract, one, one payment, or split it up over two years, would be for twenty-two thousand. The other program that they're looking at would be twenty-three thousand for a six-year contract. So what they're doing is they're looking at which program they, they want to continue with.
And usually what we can do is get free samples, you know, because they're trying to sell them to you, so we'll be, you know, bringing in some samples for the teachers to, to look at and play with.
And since we'd be a little bit out of that, let's gross that number up a little bit as an estimate. Again, this is an estimate and a placeholder, if we go and put down twenty-two, it will not be twenty-two in good light.
Right.
So we just, you know, make a reasonable.
Do you think it'll go up?
Is that way everything goes?
No. Do you think it'll go up?
So, but that, but again, that, that's, and that's sort of the purpose for any of this, whether we're dealing with curriculum or we're dealing with physical, other physical items here, we get it on the capital plan, it helps the overall planning process, we're doing our part to, to help out. Anything else?
Did we get the, was it the plugs? The plug situation, is that all set?
Oh, the.
Does that have to be, do we have to account for that?
The electrical issue.
We're almost there. The building is safe, let's put it that way, but we're still having.
Yeah, but for the new ones, do we need to get that onto the, the budget, or we just do it at this year, is that?
Do it at this year's, yeah, this year's, okay. Yep.
So nothing will break.
Right, yeah, we're, we're, we'll work our way through. One way or the other. So that was, that was my, if, if anybody had any other. So, that was, that was my, if anybody had any other thoughts, just let us know. Again, we'll be working and meeting over the next few weeks, going through budgets and looking at numbers and seeing how things go. And the plan is to have it out to you, hopefully a week or two prior to school committee's taking a look over what we have in January. We talked about the roof, so I think you're pretty much up to date on the roof issues. Hopefully, that is something we can get resolved reasonably in your future, and that's all I had.
Great. There's no executive session tonight, so I'll just leave folks with, the next school committee meeting is December eighteenth, so enjoy this crazy few weeks, and we'll see you back here then. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.